Six.
My mic?
I'm sorry.
Eckerman was involved in the Cub Scouts.
But you.
Also with the Cub Scouts, not the Cub Scouts. As far as later or as far as?
Just engaged to any.
I was engaged in this for points of time. I was on the board for.
I've got an Eagle Scout that is looking for ideas, wants to do something in the city planning. Nathan Pine. Nathan Pine, Jason's. I need to follow up with him and I'll pick something.
Can you help us project what is going on? I think they have to be individual projects. Unless there's something down the.
Ready, ready? All right. Order. Oh, start with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to whatever. Which stands one nation under God into his bowl of justice. If you would, please roll call.
Dog. Karen.
Here.
John.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Mike. Mike and Doug are absent.
Three council members present, two absent. We still have a quorum. And we've got tonight's agenda in front of us, other than maybe moving the sequence around so that our guest's agenda item can be addressed first. That will be the only change I know of to tonight's agenda. Can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Make a motion to adjourn. A second.
Karen and I.
Karen and I.
Motion carries with three. Open with citizen comment. Nobody online. You'll already be addressing the councils or any other matters you would like to address the council on. All right, we'll move past citizen comment. Next up is the consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second. Karen and I.
Karen and I.
Motion carries with three. Thank you. All right, which ones of these items are you here for, Steve?
Page two. We'll hold this closer than we do anyway. I'm here until she texts me she found. Maybe up here might stick to you. Items J and H was come here to.
J and H. All right, well, let's take them then in the order you proposed. Let's start with J. We've got the engineering services agreement, guest water, and how do you say the next word?
SCADA.
That's pretty straightforward. SCADA controls, study. V and K.
Little bit of background on that. Why I presented that this week. Dean had asked Jacob Lewis by trade of controls, whatever, engineer. To look at the controls for your lift stations, for your water system, your wastewater system, as the, as you get a fire installed out of vehicle exits, and they operate those. And as a company, right, drivers have disconnected. Modern technology based, hey, you can even have a control from your phone really, but a central location. And Dean wanted us to look at that level. They were in town, so if they had to run a fire anywhere, it's pretty bad. I tied that into the water because half, probably more than half, maybe, maybe close to half of the facilities were water, so it's also, so how about ties? It was at the beginning of the summer. I had asked Dean, they said, would you care terribly if we did a water study in town? I had some interns that I wanted to expose to really water systems, and he had no problem with that. So we actually started that a little bit, then we had to pivot. Our staffing level or some other things. So it didn't get advanced that far. And then he came to me, he said, hey, we need this done sooner rather than later, was the growth that you're having and some of the impacts on the system. But right around the corner, some of which are happening right now. So he asked if I could, if I could accelerate that. And so I said, yeah, we can. The scope of the work kind of changed. New team orders before was going to be practice for some interns. As one of you knows, the interns are going back to school regardless of anyhow. So I'm going to, I'll do this myself. And so I was, I was still giving it to you at a pretty discounted rate to recognize some of the work before. I, I, I put them together just because of pretty logical tie together. You know, maybe we wouldn't be, maybe we'd look at some of the wastewater stuff. Right, and then the number of stations out of 15,000.
My alter ego, Karen.
Yeah. Not an helper, she's just, she's just there. She's got all the information.
Yes.
Like I said, one of you, if you guys have any questions on that, I'm here to answer that. Otherwise, you know, if you want to proceed, if you approve that, you proceed with that stuff.
If, if I may, this maybe just be a semantics or a typo thing. The second bullet under the scope of projects says establish the project growth and anticipated system. Does that mean projected growth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, my strong suit, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. And I've hired like two of your daughters today for experimenting with it. Because she's going to root for you also, so.
So when you talk about projected growth, what all is that trying to take into account?
Well, so when you're sizing your facilities, water is probably the most critical. How much water are you going to be using 20 years from now? To do a study that's good, that's quite a requirement for that to project a lot of issues. It's a crystal ball. It's probably a mask, right? But what I found, especially with a community like yours that has done a number of studies, kind of grow protections. You just want to be consistent. If you're not, it drives me crazy. If a complex says you're going to be does. A wastewater study says that, a traffic settlement, something else. So what I'm trying to do is see what you've done. If I'm the first to the table, I get to do some projections with that, otherwise I'll use what's already been done. Regardless, you have to gather the information that Sarah presented. Apply some logic to it, and that's your design calculation 20 years from now. And again, you guys will be extra challenging because a big water user in your industrial parks could really throw this stuff, right? A potential community is pretty easy to protect. You could be off and still be fine. But as in my experience, if you're forcing them to have a big enough water each one to come to town, but typically they'll they're not great to have their, their.
It's just going to be in that scope then for the industrial part because we're probably going to have more businesses out there after lagoons get filled in and stuff.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of that growth projection. And so you almost have to look at the industrial part by itself. Yeah, you're going to free up some land. You've got to assume, you know, someone's going to be there. The challenge you have, and I'll give an example, earlier on in my career, I was doing a project on Coke. So the Dollar General Distribution Center was going down there. Huge, huge facility. It had like three bathrooms in the whole thing. They use less water on a day in and day out basis, as you probably knew, home. But they needed two 12-inch water mains to the facility because the whole thing's a tinny box. So they need fire protection well beyond what they use from a domestic standpoint. And so even though you might see big industrial growth out there, they swear footage, you might not get a lot of water usage. On the other hand, you should get Simmons benefit because you know we're going to be out today. And so if you have harder planning for it, I think I tried to take the approach of what's reasonable growth was the mix of the use that you have out there now and soon is going to be something very similar. If you get an anomaly like that, you kind of weigh that and allow them to come to town. So you don't want to have to drill three wells and put up a water tower for one user. If they want to pay you for three wells of water tower, we'll do it, right? So.
What would an average cost for this, for these studies be? If it wasn't discounted, is 15,000 a good deal?
Yeah. You know, the SCADA, the SCADA thing was about a $4,000 effort by itself. So it's, you know, take that, it's about that.
On that SCADA study or evaluation, once this is done, what else would be needed if we choose to go forward with SCADA system? What else would have to happen before we can procure and install that system? Is there additional development work or engineering work?
There would be the time work. I mean, so, so this, this effort would identify for one, the viability, again, fiber tolls, those patients, we already know they can't get to everywhere. And then try to see the alternatives to have what I call a system of good communication technology. So 75% of your system is tied to fiber, but the other 25 are telephone lines or radio. How do you tie all that together to be operable? And then some recommendations as far as what's needed for the supervisory controls of those. There's, again, there's options for that. You have a nice start, really nice start in the critical point, and that's probably, if I had predicted the end of this, you're probably going to use that as your basis to pay for it and as an expandable system. But how do you tie all the rest into that? So I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do. This is a standalone project, Mr. Mayor. I probably would say, you know, if you have a big water project coming up or, or you're doing another big construction beyond what we're doing, you probably tied it at that point.
Okay, then SCADA aside, what's, what's driving the need to do this now?
Water side?
Yeah.
Out of Dean.
He's asking for that?
Yeah, Dean's asking for that. Part of it is trying to make some intelligent decisions that's trying to push service to the east. How do you bring on, how do you bring on birds practically? As you guys are growing at the rates that you're growing, what type of stress is that on the system? You know, he's talking about well capacity right now. I think he has a concern about generating enough water. If we're not, when do we, what are our options? And if we are, when do we have to start planning for that? And then the other concern we have a little bit was, was storage, storage capacity. Again, same reason as you're growing, you have enough water up in the air to meet minimum requirements, to meet growth requirements. If you do, when, when does that pendulum tip? You better start planning for it. So it's really more of a planning tool, I think, for him right now. Because he's kind of making decisions a little bit on the field versus.
Like this is good information to know. The interest that we have out to the east.
I agree.
Well, yeah, right, I guess that in general, it'd be good to know at what point what infrastructure needs to be.
Seth, right?
Right. The boat goes ill. What do you think, Karen?
Kind of wish Dean were here. To be sure what it was he wanted.
Have you and Dean talked about this and that?
We have, and you know, Steve's done a wonderful job covering everything that Dean and I have talked about. There is a huge concern about storage capacity. There is a very big concern about distribution at the growth rate that we're, you know, moving forward with right now, and then the plans to move east and possibly north. I think it's, it's a good, it's a good use of money to do study. It's another tool to have in our back pocket, just like our call plan, just like our BUD housing study.
What if they have our growth get tripped up by not planning ahead? Just another thing to help, right? What's your thoughts on how we would fund that?
How would we fund the study?
The study, this, this 15,000, yeah.
I think we have plenty of water to cover that.
Okay.
I make motion to approve the service agreement for Piazza, SCADA controls with. You're good.
I'll second.
Karen and I.
Karen and I.
Motion carries with three. So we can jump right on over to item H, I believe was the other one with.
Yes.
Do you see an engineering services agreement between V and K, City of Piazza? For intersection improvement at Birds Road at Piazza Street.
So a little background on this one. We're all aware of these sites that's going on there. Dean has had some concerns for some sites that are coming out here three years ago about that intersection and the need for turn lanes. There's, there's so much going on right there. There's all some, some intertwined stormwater situation too. Everything that's east of Piazza Street, you can, whatever color you're downtown, kind of drains and comes to the kind of those right there. So there's a lot of water coming in. That site itself, whether it was intended to or not, service detention basis, it's a slow thing to down. So it's, we'll start with this, looking at the call, we're looking at stormwater there, kind of letting turn lanes, which seemed kind of turned into, maybe we should have these other turn lanes. And so throughout that whole process as well, that can remember the industry, it's just out. They expanded to the north. Not so easily, but a bunch of utilities in the quarter, which is from a service, to the point that you can hardly see anything through it. So Dean, Dean wanted me to look at probably the stormwater. I'd call it north last, but it'd be north of the police station down as that has. Kind of slain, and, and there's a couple of, again, detention bases down there. So, and it's, it's actually a good idea from a long-term perspective to do that. So I had to get some additional surveys for all of this really. And then we've been, we've actually been designing the turn, the turn lane from Piazza to Birds is actually designed, and then Dean wanted us to do some other things. Even since I submitted this, things have changed a little bit. I read the article, paper about considering that hole between the fire station, police station, potentially for acquisition of the city hall. That would change that intersection even more, it would change the demands and the traffic apps there. But for the sake of this contract, it was, it's really the work that we've kind of started already. We've got a way to roll on that intersection with the turn lanes. And I, I debated whether I should put the additional survey as an amendment on response to the contract. But it really was kind of corrected by the, this turn lane in the A site. So I, I had a big stamp vote. So that's, that's kind of an explanation of what this is for, a little bit of background. Again, any questions might have, I'm trying to answer quickly.
So the turn lane's on Birds and Y 21?
Yeah.
Is it, so the one on Birds, is that going to be a center turn lane to go to Ace?
It would be a left turn lane. That's what it is, but a left turn on.
On one.
It was three lanes.
Okay. Because I could see that even further up, right? Wherever that intersection or entrance into that's going to you're going to want to let that traffic flow, especially in the morning, if you have anything going by you.
Well, before we even started this, probably a year ago, maybe a year ago now, we talked about a traffic study. Did I go forward? Because your intersections are so close together, they all just function as a system versus standalone intersections. And you have these, these times throughout the day, it just, they're nuts, right? As you guys all know, we live here, school life, it's crazy. Chip changes are crazy.
Your clock.
You know, right, so they all function. And, and not to say that putting a city, city hall there changed the demand, but it certainly changed a little bit where people want to go. And at one point, Dean wanted almost a center lane coming from north to south on Piazza for a left turn lane to turn on the birds, which may have some merit. Just given how you're growing and the stress you're putting on that intersection. More than any intersection in town, that, that intersection sees the stress of growth. Because it's the only way to get from east Piazza to the west Piazza, you live without going over that. And if you have additional growth north, which is probably going to happen, and it's not right in front of us, but, but it probably will go, that will just add to that too, that may change things as well. So right now, we're designing it under kind of Dean's direction, which again, has some merit, but, but in the long term, maybe there's something else that you want to do, need to do, and that could also be done as part of the city if you need to set up a location. That may change things a little bit. And knowing that's a possibility, that's sort of part of our considerations, we're trying to guide through the geometrics of that intersection.
However we design it, I'd hate to just plan for right now and not the future, you know what I mean? So.
Well, let's just do this. We just talked about planning for the future, and then on this project here, we're talking about what we feel is going to happen right now. I know we can't predict the future where the growth is going to be, but.
You know, it's going to be a whole bunch of traffic.
We just, we just, like, we just talked about planning for 20 years in advance on the water stuff, and now we're just kind of guessing what's going to happen. That's what this study would give us, the right dead future. This is going to, this is going to be, this is not. This is not study.
Yeah. So again, there's nothing on here about the traffic stuff.
Right, right.
That showed at some point. And again, it might tell you that what we're doing is exactly right. I mean, that's a possibility, you know, I, I don't feel like we're doing anything, obviously short sighted, but I don't know 100% that it's the best option for it. If it only would be, but without projected traffic counts and those types of things, it's, there is some science behind it. We don't have the data to support the science, but I do feel pretty good about what we're doing. Wouldn't have to blow the whole thing up and start over. I, I hate to do that. I've lived in town, but it's done many times the last 20 years, it drives me crazy. So it's like, let's do things, a little bit more forward thought, and everything I do, I maybe inspired what I've been told to do, I try to put a little bit of forethought, future planning into what we're doing.
I don't know when, you know, when the Cox Springs Road is terminated? Roughly. Because that, that's down though. And the future of the Cox Springs interchange is going to be cut off. So you're not going to be able to get out that way, so all that.
We don't know when that's going to be. That could be 20 years down the road.
Could be five years. Could be next year. I don't know. Somebody could die there tomorrow, and it could shut up that way, so we've got to take that into consideration too.
Right. Yeah, well, and if you guys live here, I don't know, you would go that way. How many people get from east Piazza to the west Piazza via, via 20? People actually go out there, come out here to go to Casey's too. I mean, I would guess most people already take birds if they're coming from one side to the other.
If they're going on a fairway, they'll take birds, right? But if they're going to the gas station, it's 50, 50, they might hop out, depending on where they live, I would think.
Yeah.
It's just.
See, that's stuff we don't know.
So, so all that you said, I mean, as I said, the turn lane in two directions handles the question of the growth for a while. It's just, if it were wildly beyond what we can think of. As I said, is a roundabout better option, there are turn lanes, you know? But if you have a lot, you only have so much drive away there, you only put so much bait there, so you only put so many things. Three's about the max without property acquisition. So you're probably doing the best you can, which is at the limit there, there, and, you know, Ace builds, and you're not going to get property from that. I think, Karen, I think you own property in North East side there. That's on the West side. You live there, and then that other, that other land, so. You know? I feel pretty good with what we're doing, but I'd like, I'd feel a hell of a lot better if I had some science behind it, you know? Long term, and I, we need to do something because of Ace, so the turn lane, the turn lane for Ace is necessary right on. It's just maybe some of the other stuff that, that is sort of a different direction to go. I, I don't know. I'm pretty, 75% confident, so I just, I can't deal with that.
You said that the study was shelved or tabled or whatever. Does it, was it started?
No.
It's just never.
No, I went and asked you about it, like, it happened in last year, maybe even last fall about, about that, because we started delivering planning from Cap Drives to construction enterprise. And then you got the roundabout in between, and I'm like, okay, how, how does this all work together? Especially if you put more into the industry to the west, it's a little, it's a little long as that in Oden, right? So there's a lot of stress on that intersection as well. And then if you were to bring the southern extension over to Enterprise Drive through NICC, you know, a second connect needed here, that's really the stress that holds. I really worry if that happened to Enterprise Drive, if we extend.
Extend? What road?
It's, excuse me, construct a new, call it a run, a, a three minute over to NICC and work over that. Because that will.
Because that would alleviate a lot of this though.
It would, absolutely, right? So that's kind of a study sense, like, okay, well, 15% of the traffic that's here is likely to shift down to there. Great, so that will know what to do with that intersection, but that will kind of put more stress on a different intersection. And again, if they were all normally spaced apart at a normal interval, it would be a little bit more predictable, but as they're all so close together, you know, you're turning on the one, and you're right, you'll be right to the next one, which is, it acts as one system.
So is the study the knowledge you need to be 100% confident what we do then for future work?
That would help me know if I'm right or wrong, yes, but like, like I said, something needs to happen soon with the speed of what Ace is going. And I think what we're doing is, is happening to be a throwaway, but I think that's so, so far, so, so the tighter.
So do you think if we were to move forward with the corner down here with Birds and Piazza Street? And then when and if we get to that point of, of extending across down to the south, at that point, do the space study, or not the space study, the, the traffic study, to figure out what adjustments need to be made to the whole darn thing? Would that make more sense?
It, it probably does, but the answer is yes. The question I have at the time. You know, how quickly is all this going to happen?
Anywhere from six weeks to six years.
Maybe that's true.
Honestly.
That's, and, you know, it's no, so the speed with your going is, you know, you talked about being ready and having the plans in place, so that's what you're dealing with. I mean, the opportunity could come along, it's like, okay, this happens to me, so it moves to the top of the list.
Right.
And I, I know the mayor and Karen, and probably that's going to get this way, they get tired of me for St. Asbury, but you know, I've lived there for over 20 years, and I was a city engineer there through all that crazy growth. That's exactly how it happens. Like, you start planning for one thing, and an opportunity fell out of the sky, you prioritize. And you've got, you've got to be ready for that, and, and because you're making really long-term decisions on the fly. You don't have time, there's opportunities for someplace else, you don't. It, it's great, it's exciting, but man, it could be stressful at times if you don't have all the information you need to know what direction to be one of that.
I think it makes more sense to.
My information is that that's, that stormwater drain, I mean, that needs to be replaced, right, on Piazza Street?
Yeah. Yeah, and we've, we've got most of the design done here, and in fact, there's a section there that Dean's going out for emergency repair out because it collapsed. But it's changing throughout that with that industry, industry. It's all water from that part of town comes under, under the call of other businesses.
Well, it, it fills up down there too. We'd almost have to take care of that almost before Ace came in, or we're going to have.
Yeah, so I, we told them. I met with Sarah, the owner of Steve's six months ago, probably, Dean, and I told her that very thing. She's going to buy the land. A lot of that is her land, or it's, it's AJ's land, it's private, and they can do what they need to do on that. The problem they're, they're going to create by filling in some of that is actually their own. I mean, it's.
Well, it's going to back up to us.
It's a backup part, right? So part, part of the solution is putting a bigger culvert under the form of the roof, which is, you get more water through there. But there's still going to be a lot of events that exceed the capacity. But there's still gonna be a lot of events that exceed the capacity of the culvert. Um, her parking lot is gonna go on water temporarily, it's not law, you know, potentials there. We talked about doing underground detention there, uh, under the parking lot, so if we can't make some do it, um, it's more of a benefit about there. We're just gonna, we're just gonna have to try to get it out of there quicker to get into a place where we can hold it, which is kind of why there's a lot of air in that north route going down north of the station, and using that golden area that would be west of the substation, that's kind of serving this detention right now. Uh, I think a lot of the water from my dear neighborhood works its way down there through. Um, and then talking long term, you know, if you guys acquired that house at some point, it was a thick lot, and it really would be, it could function pretty well for a detention base with this full stuff downstream as well. Um, I, I have some concerns as you grow to the north, with that water lots to come down, and it's coming down there now, we gotta slow it down. We can't make pipes big enough to haul and push around downstream network, but we gotta maintain the work we can. You know, we're, we're playing with the hand we're dealt right here, trying to do the best we can. Unfortunately, there's just this convergence of all that water into that lot.
And how does the turning lane play into that? Because you're gonna have to use some of that land, you're gonna.
You, you will, yeah, um, absolutely. There's, the good news is, there's quite a wide, I call it a batch, but, you know, behind the curve, there, there's probably a good solid twenty feet, it's pretty flat there. That's where most of the turn lanes end up. We aren't bringing the cutting to the storage capacity that exists there right now. Um, it's, it's heard about, and well.
So is the thought process there to make that deeper for capacity for short term, or what do they think?
There is, there's other sort of, uh, underground detention, you know, that makes it, think of like a Saturday tank, just a bunch of land and tanks together. Um, there isn't much you can do, because it's, if you make it so low, the building will water. So she has to be high enough that, that when the water comes down, our building doesn't go in the water. Um, but, but not so high that you have to fill in what's there. Um, we're gonna try to reserve as much as we can, some on the gas, yeah, there's a pretty good ditch on the south side that they can't touch. I don't know if that group owns that, um, there's quite a bit of tension there. She plans on putting a wall up there to maximize your parking lot and not have to fill. Um, and she does have a trail to there, so, she fully understands the impact that she could have on that. And, and it's doing what she can, it's trying to preserve, we're gonna preserve much, yeah, of what's out there, what they're designing, what we're designing.
There's entrance from Piast and Birds onto that property then?
How far up is, uh, entrance on Piast Street?
Um, Dean and I told them to go as far south as they possibly could, uh, to go in there. Um, there's a hole, there's a power hole with some sort of marker to gauge where that's at, they're gonna have to leave that power hole, or have that power pool to have that directly.
So they'll have an entrance both to Piast Street and to Birds, and both of those entrances will be as far away from the intersection as practical?
Yeah.
As the stormwater, if they back it up, we've already got one house, three houses up, but they're starting, they get water close to in the basement. Last few years, even, they did work there, and it's, they're getting more in than they got in before, so we don't wanna back it up anymore.
No, that's why we're gonna go from forty-eight to, I think it was sixty or sixty-six, right? And we couldn't go any higher because there's, you know, getting into the road, so we're gonna put as many pipes in there as we can. Which should get more water in from your neighbors.
So that the one on Birds Road can get over there, the one that crosses Birds Road?
Yeah. Yeah, that one, that one will stay the same, that crosses Birds Road, goes to Mambo, of Ace property, which is.
Yeah.
And then, and then it goes kinda, it cuts across there. That'll be, that'll be outsized from that Mambo down to the culvert that crosses the gas, and so where we can control, we're increasing capacity, period, capacity. And it's Sarah's property, they, they have to provide their smoke on her, so they actually have to maintain. They can't leave it worse than what it is right now. They don't have to make it better, but they don't need to do this. So in theory, again, this is in theory, um, by making, by exploiting the figures, by making them be required not to make it worse, we should be making the situation better, uh, caveat that by whatever happens upstream of there is contributing problems as well.
So just to confirm, the turning lane on Piast Street is to the Ace property or to?
It's both, you're gonna be, you're gonna be able to turn into the Ace property off the turn lane or staying in one.
So it'll be a pretty wide turn lane, and then it'll start up pretty close to where, um, Propulse's back entrance was, right?
Uh, Dean wants, Dean wants to go as far down, and it's the Farm Heroes, that's the next building.
Yep, yep, yep.
Be kind of on the backside of Farm Heroes, I think, is where it's planned, so. Cause I mean, we're, we also don't wanna make it so expensive that you're filling out, right? So we're trying to use the, the grade that's out there, I think, within, within that. I, I don't think it's gonna be a huge issue of a couple of times a day where you need a huge volume of cars to step. And then most of them are gonna use Ace, they're gonna just get out of the turn lanes, so we continue to go. But then when you have school, school traffic close a couple of times a day, they'll use that turn.
So you're talking about northbound traffic turning onto Birds? They've always got right of way, so there shouldn't be a big backup there, cause traffic can continuously make the right turn. My, my thought was more on Birds, as you go westbound and you're queuing up to turn left, making sure there's sufficient depth, uh, for enough cars there. Cause I can see that making a significantly longer wait.
There too, and, and that's actually what this contract is for, that I, you know, there's, we were really, I thought we were just talking about turn like, uh, where Steve's, Ace Park were on Piast, I mean, I don't know if I, if I insert Dean, uh, with the inside, he wants to look on Birds, too.
Okay.
And then, then a little farther, kind of down Piast Street, we need a suicide lane, turn lane there to turn on Birds, probably.
So, understanding that what's in front of the council right now is turn lane, uh, and associated work with that, right?
Yeah, and this is a survey for, to storm, stormwater, global north.
So that's what's in front of us now, I, before we act on that, I, I wanna ask a related question. Um, as we talked about longer term planning, and we know we've got a couple really significant elements in our vision of how we expect to grow, or intend to grow, or aspire to grow. Is it a reasonable thing to talk about a traffic study that encompasses a much larger scale than just an intersection? And if you think of twenty to Railroad, Birds, I'm sorry, Piast Street, Cock Springs, maybe even Thunder Hills, that whole domain. What, what does something like that look like? Is that even feasible to do it in a magnitude like that?
Yeah, oh, that's weird, I'm trying to wrap it, break it around those categories, but, you know, the, the Piast two corners, these are highest priority. It's a problem that you have right now, it's only gonna get worse. Um, you know, your, 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 at grade intersections with twenty, you're probably your second priority, um, as far as problematic. They have the potential to be much more deadly, and all honesty, so they just won't get back there, but, um, I, what you do on Piast, uh, the study there impacts the interchange, which we already have. It projects how many people are going to go on that highway at Piast. I think kind of reverse math, you can say, hey, there's a thousand residents out there, they use the at-grade intersection. So I, I think the bulk of the work's on Piast, but I don't think it'd be very difficult to add on, but, at Cock Springs. I don't know, at this point, you'd have to go anywhere else, but if you did, you know, it's like any other study, I think. You can add, you can add to, as long as you have traffic counts, you build a model, you create models and traffic counts, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I hadn't considered that. Part, part of the motivation to, to consider the at-grade intersections is, at some point, we're gonna be having conversations with the DOT about our long-term Highway twenty access. And it, it seems as though that'd be useful for that conversation.
It will, and I mean, sort of education from the rest of the council, I'm helping with that right now, look at the rest of it's for kind of a wish list of projects to go to Chandra and ACIA for long-term planning. And, and part of those are interchanges and overpasses for Cock Springs and those, and so I, I work on those a little bit yesterday, this morning.
So would your, would the traffic study effort be able to look at what we've got for the PUD and make reasonable estimates to account for what that future traffic load would be when that's?
Yeah, it would, it would have to, I mean, you know, your, your developable property is part, is pretty important, the density of which development, because of the fact, you know, how many trips, you know, to use an official term, occur in there. Um, so your, your preliminary plans for, for your, your, what's that, it's called a water.
Quarter centages of names on it right now?
I mean, that's, that's kind of the impetus that's pushing the next level of traffic impact. That's where you're being, those, you know, top of the hill, private, most of the part of it, but yeah, again, well, you guys really only have three, three easy access points to Highway twenty. You, you can, you can pretty easily tweak that model to know that both of it's here and, and interchange. You know, to a lesser degree, it's, it's Cock Springs, and to a lesser degree, it may be Thunder. But you, you definitely can get those counts. DOT might have something, too, that we can supplement at those rates. Uh, but that information, whether you provide it now, or whether you get closer to funding or improvements, or you're gonna have to have it, right? That's just gonna be kind of a function of supportive expectation, whether they say, hey, here's four million dollars for an overpass, twenty-five or fifteen for an interchange, they're gonna want those traffic counts, because it's really necessary. So do it now, do it later, you know, I'll go on, those particular ones, that's kind of up to you. I, I think if you build a model, a travel model, that's expected to be more heavily Piast Street now, those would definitely be easy to handle.
So if we go with the scope of Piast Street now, what I think I'm hearing and our understanding from you, it would be logical to append on to that at future points in time?
Yeah.
And there really isn't a loss of, of investment?
No, it's just, just to kind of make my point on that and support what you said. In the view, they've got a master traffic model over there, every time somebody does development, they ask for a traffic study. They, they want that traffic study, or, or, because they just don't put it in the model, so we're constantly adding on to the model, put the data that I'm gonna provide.
Okay.
Didn't NICC do a traffic study not too long ago before they started building?
We did a traffic study with NICC before we put in the roundabout, I believe, but I've not.
Oh, I think they've done one after that, I'm not positive.
I have not seen it.
I'm not sure either. What they do up there is gonna have some kind of effect one way or the other. Where did they put their parking for all those students, too?
There'd be a parking lot.
Just a parking lot, just a regular one?
There's a parking lot.
There's parking lot, there will be any one.
College suites?
College suite, you're talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're.
I think they're sharing, they're just sharing some space with the nice.
I think so, too, yeah.
Like to the south also.
Yeah. They have parking to the south.
Road that along the.
Whatever, Citrus anyway, I don't know.
Yeah, I know, we've addressed it with, with West, too.
Where they do.
Cause the, cause the school did not want it.
It's intended to be shared.
The premises.
Shared, but then between NICC and college suites.
So I guess, I guess basically with what we have in front of us is to finish the, the, the intersection.
I'm more worried about storm, so.
Well, that's, that's.
I still want, I still want, yeah, to fix the intersection, so.
It's all kind of one, there's gonna be a big structure that's under the turn lane, it's kind of.
Right. I was hoping we keep the future plan in mind, right, unless it develops in future plan. Well, whatever, make it wide enough, big enough for everything.
Right, right.
We're gonna have a lot of traffic this way eventually, I'm thinking until this road's done, or whatever happens.
I think that's key to everything, future plan is what, what we're looking at right now, right?
I need to do it.
I'll make a motion to approve the enteric service agreement, particularly at Kate's, the Piast intersection improvement, Birds Road and Piast Street.
Give me a second. Karen and I.
John and I.
Carrie and I. Carrie is with three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Making.
Anything else you'd like me to hang around for on the agenda here? I, I just, I just got it up, so I don't have to.
I was just gonna ask how the dinner is speaking.
Did you hear my phone phone?
I was gonna ask what, what she was bringing, and if she had enough for all of us.
If you wanna hang here until we, Royal Oaks, very.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, there's only around here to get all word, very far. Should fly, I don't have to be ready.
What is enough? So when you guys are locked in a room too long, you need to speak.
And then, which one were you thinking? Let's just go to that next.
Originally, I think you've already put a set of eyes to all of these plans, and I found out that back in planning and zoning, they approved it, but it wasn't captured in the meeting minutes, so I took it back to planning and zoning to make sure that we capture the approval process, and now it's back for you. We were thinking in between the time that that happened and being here tonight, that we would have all the wet signatures on all the documents, but we don't. So, um, I would like to make the recommendation that we move forward with the approval, but with contingent upon getting all the signatures. Um, this has kind of been laying out for quite a while, and I know that they're anxious to get moving on it. So also would ask that we wait the last two readings.
So, I'm sorry, we're talking three, are we on agenda item three A right now?
Yes.
Well, yes, three A through E, kind of go together, they're all kind of one package.
It's a survey of plat, preliminary plat, final plat.
Okay, and for my clarification, Laura Drive at Piast Street, that intersection is where the new funeral home is, right?
Right, yes.
So would it be helpful to walk through each of these before we take an action on any individual one? Are they related in that way?
I don't think they are related, definitely.
They are related.
The plat survey obviously would be your first, um, item to look at.
Unless you're breaking up the existing ground, right?
If you have any questions on that plat survey?
What do you mean you don't have all the signatures?
We didn't have the hard copies of the plats until today, in all of the busyness that's been going on, so, um, didn't realize that either, that we only had electronic copies. So we needed the owner's signature, but the attorney's signature, we weren't able to obtain today. We do have the, we have the surveyor's signature, we have the owner's signature now, we don't have the attorney's certificate.
So on the plat, the plat of survey, back to it. We've got, uh, so along Piast Street, we've got Royal Oaks East Sixth Edition. And from the north to the south, I count up Lot one, two, three, and four. And as I understand it, Lot four is directly opposite of Royal Oaks Drive?
Yes.
Okay. So if we approve this, we then are saying? So if we approve this, we then are saying that we will go back and change the comprehensive plan. Because by approving this, we will end up putting residential structures where the comprehensive plan is suggesting a road. Right? Am I, am I reading that accurately?
Yep.
I thought in our conversations with AJ that that was something that he was amendable to do.
Amending?
Well, in talking to him and letting him know that that one lot is what we need to, to obtain, to be able to create the, continue the road through there.
Now, if, if the road gets continued to the north, what's it called, ISA?
Lara.
Or IS. No, ISA.
ISA, yes.
It goes, continues through. I don't think that's any different. Because all idea is to get east to west access, right?
Right.
Now, does it have to be in conjunction with Royal Oaks Drive? I don't think it matters. But as long as we can get some sort of a an agreement that says, hey, as we're moving, we're going to be, we're going to take this to, right?
But it turns it into a road there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. As long as we know this is going to go all the way to Cox Springs.
The, by the lot, Gary Miller still owns that land up there.
I think AJ does.
AJ does?
I think so.
He owns it?
I don't think he owns a lot now.
And then already an intersection there, right? Because there's already an entrance at two.
Right, as long as we can get that.
This would just turn it into a legit road versus whatever it is right now.
Right, and that way, if we could get them to agree to the fact that this, this is just going to go all the way, so we get it east to west. I don't think we necessarily need to hold these guys up for doing this.
And you got a developer that wants to do something.
Right, but we, because that's, the comprehensive plan is a plan-ish.
Well, it's not a guideline, right? So that's the best thing to do. I agree. And it, it makes perfect sense to me. Before we approve this, it seems like we maybe want to ask RDG to factor this in, take out what's there. And then how would they adjust it to fit ISA Drive as being the connection as opposed to Royal Oaks Drive? That way, we at least know that we've, we've amended the vision to fit this now. I mean, one of two things would have to happen, right? We either amend this plan to fit the cop plan, or we amend the cop plan to fit this plan. And I agree with you. I think the second one's probably the better option. We just go ahead with this and then let RDG just make the change versus hold these guys up because they've already kind of, I don't know, waiting for a while. I don't know how long it would take RDG to at, at least give a feasibility, a thumbs up, but yeah, we could make this work.
I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything to the whole bug. And we're just, we're just sliding that road up.
But the cop plan actually had it.
How wide are these? If you're talking larger, that's 50 feet. Don't we need 60 feet if you're going all the way east west?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You're going, you're talking about that going through from east to west for quite a ways. You need a 60 foot road.
On, you're talking on.
Well, ISA. I don't.
Either one of them, because Lara's not 60 feet either.
Why do you need 60 feet? I'm asking.
Uh, it has something to do with state law, county laws.
Is there a certain length that it has to be?
If it's a thorough street, if it's going to be a thorough street, I think it needs to be 60. Is that right?
Certainly, I don't know if there's a lot, that sounds easy, how wide it needs to be, but I wouldn't go in less than 60.
If it's going to go straight, if it's going to be through a street.
Yeah, because I mean, you gotta, you have enough, have to have enough people. So 60 feet is a small, 66, 66 is what you're trying.
66, that sounds right, yeah. I know it's somewhere in there.
It's just 50.
So does that just simply mean that we work with AJ and/or the property owners to make sure that right of way is available? And then proceed as its sketch without amendment?
I don't know, is it the setbacks on these lots are only 10 feet? You couldn't pick it up on either side?
Well, it, it may mean that we have, for the, for the short first stretch, it may have to be a shared thing between the lot one and the funeral home. I haven't looked closely to see what the impact or something like that would be. So lot one, I think is still ill, that's where the big piles.
Yes, uh, I would dare to.
You're right.
I would, I would think that something up there eventually would go straight through to Foxman's Road or wherever.
Well, I think that's our want.
Um, and with setbacks being as shown they are these days, to improve that later would be next to impossible. But maybe that isn't the place we wanted either. I don't.
Cool, the cop plan. I should print that thing up.
It's as close to the cop plan as that we have. As far as location wise.
What's the difference though between that and the cop plan? Cop plan, I think, had it go straight through for Royal Oaks and then it did.
You want to be down here.
It did.
Like here.
Yeah, but this where ISA is going is kind of.
Right, so I think it's where you, where you, where you go, right? I don't know what you're going to do in the future, but yeah. So what are our options here?
And then do you happen to have the cop plan on your laptop? If you can get, or it's on the website too, I guess. But in the cop plan, it's page 52 has that piece that we're talking about. And I can, it seems like the, we've got lots of opportunity and this would be Lara, or is a lots of opportunity to let that do whatever we want it to do.
Yeah.
But it does, it, that's a really good point you bring up, Karen. We would want to make sure we're doing it with the 66 foot.
Maybe there's a place farther up too. I don't know, but it's something.
It's still all right.
With the setbacks, we used to have a lot more setback. We don't have that anymore. So when we plan this stuff, we don't plan it at the beginning. We're not going to get it back, so.
Yep.
But, but there might be a better place. I'm not saying.
Yeah, maybe that's the road that's in Royal Oaks, right? If the inside of it, that's a wider road up there.
That's what I was thinking. That's.
Put it here, there's one up here, Lara Drive. Lara, yeah.
Oh, Lara's not white.
Well, none of them are on that suburb. Laura.
What's that?
Michelle.
Michelle East.
Michelle is not.
Ninja bread?
The newest sectioning, that was like pretty wide.
Oh, you're going way up there. Yeah, that was supposed to be a split intersection up there, or like a grid.
Well.
It's really wide.
Maybe that's more what he had in mind for.
Wasn't so.
Yeah, one of the streets in Royal Oaks might have the. Might already have a cover.
It's kind of a big document. I guess even with the picture, I guess what we're talking about is would we, I don't know, we would have to rather than approve it tonight, go back and ask between AJ and slot one on my Gary, is that what it says?
Yes.
Between AJ and Gary, could we facilitate a 66 foot right of way? And he would, may have to adjust his plan a little bit to account for that. Page 52.
That's going.
She's hitting the buttons in a second.
There we go.
So there's a lot, a lot of things we can play with on that, right?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, the only landmarks are the stuff that's in orange. And actually, it's only half of that. Left half. There's nothing behind those condos right now, is there?
No.
This land.
But I think that's, that's the second, the right hand of the orange.
Yeah.
Right?
More, yeah. Yeah, it'd be up a little higher, right? Where those, what's number one?
No, I don't think it's that high.
Well, Royal Oaks Drive is straight across.
Right, so the next one up would be ISA Drive.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, 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 okay.
So it is. Where number one is, eats into that, whatever that is.
So ISA is just going to be. Yeah, I, I think the biggest thing is if we keep it at 66 feet.
Yeah, it still goes to, it still could tie into that number two area and three.
Yeah, depending.
Where those could move east, they could slide up north and south.
Absolutely, yeah.
There's a hundred, a hole in the ground there by five, so I don't know how that's going to work. There's a what? Pretty big hole in the ground over there by number five, isn't there? Or it doesn't.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought.
But you know, that's the shadow of the Cox Springs Road.
What's that?
Where the quarry is.
Yeah, I think that's much further east.
So how do we go back to them? Can we approve with them agreeing to move this to 66? Or do we have to take, have to take it back?
No, we can move forward with that contingency in place.
60, right?
60 or 66?
66.
It's going to take up quite a bit.
If it's what, if it's what's needed for the future growth, then that's what we ought to be asking for. With the cop plan being, that's going to be the road that goes down.
Right.
That's going to be so. The only thing is.
That'll be my concern with that road heading. You have some plant development right there, and again, it will.
Right.
Is making sure you have enough right of way to put a road back with the size to handle that.
So start with 66. So is, is 66 the right number?
60 or 66 would be, would be good. If you take about now 50, I just looked at the plans and I thought we got a 25 foot, 24 foot road. So that really only needs 13 feet at curve, so probably like to put a five foot sidewalk on there also. So you may want to, I mean, you're in the tough spot because you don't have the side standards here. What you really would like to have here is a 30, 31 foot road because it's going to be a high track road. Uh, eventually, but you don't have anything that can make them do. Today, we really ask people to do the right thing, but ours are half, that's the approach that we have here. But we're going to be fixing this, some, you know, generation down the road that, that develops. Just back to our other conversation, we're putting stress on roads to be able to track.
So understanding that we're, we're headed down that path, right? It's, okay, let's do it right. I'm, I'm still looking for that definitive answer. Your expert opinion is 66 foot the number we've.
Yes, I love that. 66 would be my number, but I feel all right with 60. It's not an uncommon, but either. Uh, but 66 is, seems like a bad number, but given how plats are laid out, it's, it's a division of a, of a section. Uh, so I, I would shoot for 66. And, and we, we've already reviewed, approved this plat before, the prioritization of the cop plan as well. So I think that's the basis of you making asking that this is not accessible.
So let me throw this little curveball at us. Can we ask for a sidewalk to be put on ISA?
They can ask for anything. I don't know how much room they got left.
See that?
66, isn't it?
Right, I'm just saying, if we're, if we're planning on putting all that green space back there, walking to and from that's going to be pretty important.
Where's our parks and trails?
For what it's worth, they're cross-section, they're typical pavement cross-section. Four foot sidewalk on both sides of the pavement.
So we might have one. That would need what right of way? I just always want a safe place to walk to.
It fits in the 50, but gee, there's no need to get a future dig up and put until, there's still a lot of stuff to put right inside.
So if we did 66, we would still be able to have the sidewalks as you just described.
You'd actually know the 31 foot, again, 31 foot back, that curve, road, five foot sidewalk. It's still have more movement, even if you're slowing down, I mean, whatever you need.
So you asked about the trails. If whoever has control, take it to page 67. We can get a glimpse at what trail vision was as of the time the cop plan was put together. You'll have to zoom in on it, I think. Oh, come on, man. That's, that's no fun. Give me a headache. Sorry.
Um, this would just apply to the street part before he gets into his cul set, is that right?
Yeah, and that's, I'd be, I'd be more concerned about the, it, it's almost like in the future, it'd almost be like what Birds is, right?
Yeah.
So that's why I want the sidewalk on it.
Number six, right? So it's taking the dotted line is the trail.
And now becoming Royal Oaks, now we would take that, move it out of ISA and come down, watch follow that.
Yeah, that's fine. The, the gray line, the gray dash line is called a future collector's street. Which we would shift up to ISA, then the green dots, I believe are the trail.
Yeah.
Future trail. So, um, understanding the purpose of using it as a future collector's street, Steve, as well as having the trail, is 66 feet still adequate?
It is, yeah, because the trail replaces sidewalks.
Let's make that motion.
Well, I think the first one's a plan, right?
No. So plat's fine, right?
Do you need a motion on that?
All the first one is doing is taking that larger lot and dividing it into lot one, one, which will become Royal Oaks 7th. And lot two, one, which will still be just vacant.
I'll make a motion to approve plat survey, lot one, one, and lot two, one of Royal Oaks East Fourth Edition in the city of Piastast.
I'll second.
Karen and I.
John and I.
Here. Motion carries with three.
And that's contingent on the attorney's certificate, correct?
Yes.
Well, yeah, actually, we're going to have to. Flat size is going to be different as, as flat size.
Yeah, Karen, you said the contingency was on, please say that again.
The attorney's certificate, signatures.
Okay. So will numbers on this plat need to change if we goes to a 60 foot, 66 foot right of way?
It's not that size will change. So I don't know.
So we're better off not to approve anything tonight, till we can get, um, get in front of them and see if they're willing to amend that street from 50 to 66.
All right. So how do we undo a motion we just approved?
X, I'm sorry, what was that?
How do we undo a motion we just approved?
I don't think you really need to undo it. It's just, it's a clarification. Nobody seconded. If you did, then all of the, okay, all the amendments. I would say make another motion to amend the motion to accept the survey, plat survey to a senate.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion we just made for further study. Are you going to second that?
So there, there's not enough room there?
Well, no, the dimensions on the lots are going to change if you can change the street.
Yes, but L2, right, is what we're talking about? Billion, it's 48, 48 feet.
Lot one's not going to change, right?
Uh, no, because that's where the street is, 54 foot street.
Piastast Street.
Okay. Joe can feed on that resolution. Jim can feed on that resolution.
Ooh, wow. Haven't done that yet, that would be fun.
Gavel when you do it.
What, what's the mechanism to do that?
You, um, you would write a letter to the council stating why. That might be the cleanest.
I've got, what, fourteen days to, to?
That's, I think, three.
Three, okay. All right.
Sorry, Karen, I'm not gonna say.
Is that, is that the better one?
I worry about the clarity on that for sure.
Okay.
So in the meantime, we're gonna speak with the, the developer.
To amend that.
ASAP, Astrid eight oh five. Just to make sure there's nothing hanging in here.
Well, that's.
So.
Well, doesn't matter whether you approve or not.
Is that what we're gonna do?
Yeah, I'll veto it, it'll come back up again. This, this will involve a conversation both with Gary Miller as well as AJ, right?
Right.
As we are going to change lot one, as well as lot one dash one.
Rather than have it all get.
So let me. I'm sorry.
Part of it's Gary's, part of it's AJ's, sorry, Royal Oaks or who's?
Royal Oaks. There'll be two parties that need a conversation. Or at least need to have, agree to, or hopefully they will be compliant with the request.
Well, then do we have to table B through E?
That's correct.
Need a motion to table that?
I would say no.
No?
Well, procedure, I, I don't mean to throw wrench in this, this is probably just for my education. If a motion was made and passed, it's currently passed, it has not been vetoed yet. So then do we not take action to defer action on the other ones?
Right, we're tabling it.
Okay, did we table it?
No.
So do we need?
Oh, okay.
Table, or is it just?
If you do table it. In my opinion, I always had you make a motion, Doug Herman did not agree with that statement necessarily, he said there didn't need to be motions to be tabled. Did you guys hear all that when you spoke about that?
Yeah, I got confused. We've always, we've always made motions to table, anyway.
I'm, I'm perfectly aligned with that.
So can we do all, or do we have to do one, each one individually?
Individually.
Make a motion to table. B, um, oh, this would be C?
The preliminary plat?
Yeah, preliminary plat, Royal Oaks seventh.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I.
You're right.
Motion carries with three.
I'll make a motion to table plan specification of Royal Oaks East Seventh Edition.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I.
You're right.
Motion carries with three.
Make a motion to table resolution approving the final plan of Royal Oaks East Seventh Edition on the city of Piasta.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I.
Jerry, I.
Motion carries with three.
I'll make a motion, uh. Tabling the ordinance pending zoning map Royal Oaks East seven.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I.
Jerry, I.
Motion carries with three. That just covers. Felt like city council training.
That's one-on-one, I'm in trouble.
Okay. Uh, we will now move to three F, right, we can move to plat survey lot. One dash seventy-five, two dash seventy-five, Thunder Valley Estates. So this is. Taking one parcel, it's splitting it into two.
It's a duplex.
Uh, it says zero lot line, right?
Yep.
Plat survey, I'll second.
You and I.
John I, you're right.
Motion carries with, just from my education, why, why would somebody do this? What's the purpose?
A duplex?
Yeah, to split.
They can sell one side to one person, sell the other side to another person.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah.
All the.
Yeah, split, right.
All the ones in the cul-de-sacs are like that over there, they build them and then.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's like there's gotta be some kind of an understanding on maintenance and repairs.
Um, on those zero lot lines, so if you fix your roof. On your side of the house, you grow your own grass, you will pick your own lot.
If you wanted to, you could put brown siding on your side, and your neighbor might have blue.
Good.
My neighbors don't. I can't.
Uh, item three G, we'll keep moving along here, this is. Resolution approving the internal advance for funding of the urban renewal project associated with. The Piasta, or I'm sorry, dimensional taproom, Piasta Taproom, same thing, right?
Yes.
Should be transferred from Frenchers, we used to do from.
I had a question, uh, not particularly this, but this funny is on the Th- Thunder Valley LLC.
Thunder Valley LLC is. Dimensional taproom, or Piasta Taproom, all by Jeff Birds, Jeff Goldwyn.
Oh, hey. How many names does that have?
A lot.
And when we talk June first, twenty twenty-three, are we talking fiscal year or are we talking? Calendar year?
For the repay?
Yeah.
Um, so it'll be sent to, this internal loan for repayment will be. Sent to the auditor with the fiscal year twenty-three. Um. They call that? Called?
For the auditor?
To the, the Buick County Auditor. So by December one, we have to notify the Buick County Auditor, what we're beginning to be requesting, that fiscal year for tip, for the next fiscal.
Certification.
Yes, tip certification certificate.
Timed on this year.
Yes, so, um, coming in probably the first meeting in November, you're gonna be getting that, every year you get that. Tip certification that we sent to the auditor, so this fifty thousand will be repaid to our tip fund. Be in the fiscal year twenty-three, so we'll start seeing those payments in October of twenty-three, or twenty-two, excuse me.
October twenty-two. Calendar, October twenty-two.
Correct.
All right, let's just wonder.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I, you're right.
Motion carries with three. So we've already covered three H, we'll jump to three I, ordinance pending title six, chapter five, section six and seven of Piasta municipal code regarding. Residential renter rental property lien exemption.
What this does, it takes the owners off the landlord and puts responsibility on the tenant. So when the landlord rents to a tenant, they have to come in here and put, sign up for water and sewer. And at that time, we would require a deposit of ninety-day average, which we still need to calculate. Um, at the final billing, if there's anything left on the bill, that deposit will be used to pay off that final bill. And hopefully, the tenant will give us a forwarding address, so we can refund any money that's left over, if they don't, then we will obviously keep that. Uh, though it goes to the Iowa. Like the finance thing, we have to turn it over. Okay, sorry, we have to give it back. I wanted to keep it. I tried. Um, we're, um. We need to calculate the ninety days to be able to, um, to, to come up with a deposit number. And we feel that we're gonna take that ninety-eight average on all the apartments that are huge to the community, so it's only fair. To somebody that has a larger family, that we're not, um, taking advantage of, you know, smaller families coming into that deposit. We would like, uh, to get this implemented as quickly as possible, and we're gonna have to set up numerous accounts, so it's gonna be kind of labor-intensive on our behalf. Uh, so we're asking that, uh, we waive the last two readings on this, so that we can have this fully implemented by October one.
Um, did I see in here somewhere where it says a landlord has to collect the deposit from the tenant?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, what do they have to say about that?
Sherry, I talked to Sherry about it, she didn't seem to have a problem, she said they're there, she has to collect the monies for the deposit anyway, so it just came. The only concern that she had was the thirty-day, uh, notification, but that is state law, so there's no way that we can get out and around that requirement.
But when the group of landlords were here, they didn't want to collect the water deposit on top of collecting their own deposit, and that was understandable to me.
So if the landlord does not tell the city that they want to be exempt from the city placing a lien on their property if the tenant defaults. They don't have to. They don't have to pay that deposit. And the language, it's written in here this way, mental landlord says, I'm not responsible for this tenant, if they default. They have to. And that's what Sherry was asking for, that thirty-day extension, she wanted longer than thirty days, but the state legislature has dictated. That is the amount of time that they're allowed.
So you're confident that the landlords are comfortable with this?
I would say so.
Have we sent them all notice? I thought maybe there'd be some here tonight.
No, I did talk to Sherry, um, about a week and a half ago.
I'd make a motion for the ordinance. To the first reading.
I'll second.
You and I.
John I. It's a great time.
Was that all about?
So. Motion carries with three on the first reading.
I'll make a motion to wait the second and third.
I'll second.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Fail.
Motion does not carry.
Take order.
But it failed, failed.
I think we better give them an opportunity.
We're just gonna go to the next meeting for the second reading.
Nobody says anything or calls or shows up to the next one, pass.
Do we know? I don't recall specifically who each of the landlords was that came to that meeting. Do we have a record of that?
It was all of them. It taught except for Gary Miller.
Okay.
All which have spawned.
Right. Of the ones who came, how many of them have seen this language?
We, we haven't shown, we, it's out there, I mean, we haven't physically sent this to them, it's a city ordinance, this is what they were asking for. And it, it's following state, we're not requiring your tenants to place a deposit unless the lien will. And cities don't provide a landlord a form to say, I'm not responsible for this, that, that, this is on the landlord.
But actually, they haven't seen this ordinance until we publish these minutes, right?
No, they can see it today, as soon as the agenda's out, they can see it.
Agenda, okay.
It's done. All right. We've already covered J, so we will jump to item three K, the thirty-six inch storm sewer replacement on Cox Springs Road.
Dean asked that, we bring this before you, um, since they were doing the water and sewer extension, um, there was a stormwater pipe that had collapsed. And since everybody was onsite, um, and they're ready to go, it was just, it made sense to go out and get two quotes for this. Uh, obviously, we wanna try to get this done before school, uh, starts back up for the year. So before you, you have two quotes that Dean has provided.
Is it reasonable to interpret that having this work done at an incremental cost of sixteen thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars is a deal?
I think so.
Since they're there.
Right, right.
That's horse head, right?
Culvert collapsed?
Yes.
So it needs to be done?
It absolutely needs to be done.
So it doesn't look like we have a choice. I'll make a motion to. Put it to sort of six storm, six-inch storm sewer replacement.
It's actually change order number one.
Oh, I'm sorry, change order number.
Water making and sanitary sewer extension.
Just for clarification, if I'm, so look at the document, I see a change order number two as well.
That was fixed. That was something that the contractor submitted, that was a big confusion point.
Oh, it perpetuates. Okay, so we're technically, so we'll.
Change order one.
So what we're proving here, the motion needs to be specific to change order number one.
Correct. So both of these are sixteen thousand, what, they're one-time sixteen thousand? Oh, that's a change order.
It's only one change order.
Two bits, we're, we're approving. I'll second.
What do you say?
You got first and a second.
Hey.
Yes, yes.
Is that a yes?
I didn't realize it. He was being polite, I'm not used to it.
Was yours a yes?
I could, I could be on point. That's actually my specialty.
Motion carries with three.
That's my specialty, not being polite.
All right, we've exhausted our agenda items, uh, still, the citizens on the line, still Steven, the room. Any other matters for the council? I'll take a motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn, I'll second. Jerry, I, motion carries with three, meeting's adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, so.